Please rise with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
As a preliminary matter, this is select board chair Jeffrey Swamberg permit me to confirm that all members in person on the committee are present and can hear me, but we have one member from the select board. Chris, can you hear me?
I can.
Very good. Thank you. Good morning or good evening. This open meeting of the select board is being conducted both in person and via Zoom. Some speakers on the agenda will be participating remotely and we will allow for the public to provide comment via Zoom. The agenda posted on the town's website identifies how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that if you are participating remotely, other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All the materials for this meeting except any executive session materials are available on board docs and we recommend the members of the public follow the agenda as posted on board docs unless I note otherwise. Before we begin, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will go through the members inviting each to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Be told until your name is called. Further, if you are participating via Zoom, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. For all participants in person or remote, please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair taking care to identify yourself. Right into the public comments. After members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will ask members of the public who wish to speak to clearly state their name and address. Prior to making their comments, public comments will be limited to three minutes each. Thank you very much. Let us turn to the first item on the agenda, which is public comment. The board would like to hear public comments and if there is a further action that is required by the board, the chair will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, the board may, if they are able to within the confines of open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter. And we will start and I'll see if there's any public comments from individuals in the room, any public comment from within the room tonight? Seeing none, are there any public comments from those joining us online through Zoom? Very good. I see no hands up. So we will move on to item four, which is the consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda. One is use of Memorial Park for the Maynard Cultural Council Jazz Festival. And one is an Arbor Day proclamation, which you see before us. Any questions from members of the board on either of the items on the consent agenda?
No, I will move to approve the consent agenda, items A and B as presented, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
Any comments on either item?
Is there a follow up for the Jazz Fest regarding, I noticed that the police questioned the number of attendees? So I don't know if there's anything that we need to. Are they going to follow up or are we okay with it or?
Yes, sorry about that. Let me just navigate to the notes. Okay, no, I think that so we've been keeping the communications between the applicant and police, police fire and DPW, they're, they're continuous. So they're, they've all been connected and they didn't express any really concerns about it.
Okay.
I think the response was, oh yes, in the notes. While the number of attendees is probably about 300, it's staggered, so it wouldn't have enough people at once to constitute more police involvement.
Okay, alright, sounds good.
Any other comments? Alright, motion has been made and seconded all in favor of Justine.
Yes.
David.
Yes.
Chris.
Chris.
Yes.
And I'm a yes, the consent agenda passes. We will move to item five, which is the use of town property. We have Sylvia Smith looking for a cleanup project. Is Sylvia Smith with us?
I did send her the Zoom link.
That's okay. I think for a cleanup, this is a relatively low impact use and we have the application in front of us. Can you just quickly walk us through the high level?
Sure. So it's a, this student honor society project between the applicant and another student. We have coordinated with police, fire and other works and as well as received confirmation from the schools. So between all those departments, there's been no issue. The only thing we were coordinating was just the actual disposal of the trash and the applicant and DPW are in contact and are on the same page as the plan.
Very good. Any questions on the proposal? So this is the high school green committee then?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Questions or comments on the proposal? I will entertain a motion.
To approve the use of Coolidge Park for a cleanup project on May 13th and May 27th, 2023, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM contingent upon the participant's submission and town acceptance of current liability insurance waivers and contingent upon appearance to all public health and safety guidelines. Motion authorizes the use of digital signatures and approved.
All in favor? Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. We will move on to item six, which is an appointment for the housing authority. This is the second one in two meetings. This is for a position where the the, the individual filling position must be a tenant of the federally subsidized housing. And so that's what we're looking at today. We had three notices of intent. I did ask for all three to fill out our standard appointment questionnaire. I believe only one got back to us unless some more came in recently, Greg.
I did receive two, however, that the second applicant has withdrawn and I just received that notice this morning and I made that note in board docs. So I think we just have the one, the one from Stephen Marcy.
Alright, very good. And is Mr. Cranshaw on line this evening?
I believe so.
Alright.
No, I see his name up there. Fine, right.
Yep.
Bill?
I'm here.
Very good. Could you walk us through the, what the housing authority has done in looking for these applicants?
Uh, we, well, we posted notice of the position in all the public spaces and we delivered notices to all the residents. And after that, everything is up to you.
Okay. And does the housing authority have an opinion on the multiple applicants that we are looking at?
Uh, no, we don't. Uh, this is your appointment and we haven't actually reviewed any of the applications.
Um, and if we were to delay this appointment, would that impact the housing authority's ability to conduct its business?
It would not.
Okay.
You could delay it until the latest appointment should probably be to life first.
Okay.
I thought I saw an email, Bill, during this week. It had something about a problem. If there was a non appointment, was that something different?
Um, probably. I think most of the immediate problems were rectified with the action the board took the last meeting.
Okay.
Um, are any of the individuals who submitted a notice of intent with us this evening? Okay.
I did invite them. I sent everybody the, the link. So I did not necessarily receive confirmation from everybody that they would be attending, but.
Yeah, and I, I think that expectation was set relatively quickly in terms of the meeting. So my preference would be to give them some more time to respond or fill out the appointment questionnaire, which we sent out recently. Um, I think the last appointment we made was impacting the ability of the housing authority to conduct their business. But if this one is not, I think my preference would be to delay and actually hear from the candidates before we put them on the board. Any other opinions from the board? Chris?
That makes sense.
Okay. Then I will pause and see if there's any other comment on this topic. Um, and if not, we will reach out to them and give them a bit more time to fill out the appointment questionnaire and attend a subsequent meeting so we can actually talk to them before pointing them. Okay, alright. Alright, very good. Then we will move on, no motion there to item seven. Uh, and so this is a public hearing. Just give me a second to pull up the advertisement. Alright, notice is hereby given in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138 as amended, that a public hearing will be held at, I'm sorry, will be held on Tuesday, April 18th, 2023 at 7:15 at Town Hall Room 201, 195 Main Street, Maynard, Massachusetts, 01754 to consider the application for a new Section 15 Package Store Wines and Malt Beverages License for the Assabet Village Food Cooperative Incorporated, doing business as Assabet Co-op Market Manager Sam McCormick at 86 Powder Mill Road, Maynard, Massachusetts. Hybrid option attendance via Zoom using the access instructions on the posted agenda to be found at www.townofmaynard.gov. Copy of application is on file in the office of the select board. Alright, and so I will open the public hearing. Uh, and so we are looking at a application for a new license to the AVCC for a farmer's series four. Greg, are there any more details you want to fill in before we hear from the applicants themselves?
Sure. Um, it's acting on farmer's series or it gets, I, I, I think there was a quick mistake in the motion that I fixed earlier today. Just noticed. So it is the, that Section 15 Package Store for wine and malts and beverages. Um, I met with Sam, the applicant, a few times and we went over everything. Uh, we've spoken with other relevant departments who, you know, OMS within OMS that are aware. Um, and there's been no real issue. So I will let Sam take the floor, who is attending virtually.
Sam, good evening.
Good evening. I'm Sam McCormick. Yeah.
No, I was gonna ask you to do exactly that, introduce yourself and then just give us an overview on, on how you plan to use the license.
Absolutely. My name is Sam McCormick. I'm the general manager for the Aspect Co-op Market, address 86 Powder Mill Road, Maynard, Massachusetts, 01754. We are pursuing a package sale license for the food cooperative so that we can fulfill the business plan and market studies that have been under review since 2015. That show that for us to be a successful market here in this area, that we should provide sales within all of the different areas traditional to a full service store. And here Massachusetts, that includes package sale of beer, well malt beverages and wine. We've had this conversation with Greg Wilson and we've gone through the application process as well as we've spoken with members of the the state board to make sure that we were fulfilling all the application requirements as a cooperative specifically. So we did submit this with our full board of directors having completed query check forms and we have all of our motions from our board submitted with the packet. So that's what we're here for today. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from board members before I open it to public comment?
Question, Greg, if you know, uh, how many of these licenses do we have that are available right now?
So this one is actually the last of its type that's available. The, the wine and malt beverages. And we, I know we have off the top of my head, two full liquor licenses for onsite consumption available. And then the only other ones that we have are related to the special legislation, which I actually need to do a little bit of research on to make sure I fully understand for the uses. So we're actually getting pretty full, which is great.
Okay, so if, if we approve this, there won't be any others currently available?
None of that type.
And if we wanted some of the same type, we would need to, it would be an act of the state legislator to get more.
Right.
Time to make approval.
Right. And what I'm going to, my plan to do is with the ones that we already have from special legislation, which grew a couple of years ago. I am just going to reach out to my contacts in that realm to make sure I understand parameters.
That's fine. Today we're talking about the one that we do have or Assabet, as Sam just described. Any other questions or comments from the board?
Does this, not that it really matters, but just to clarify, when, when we give out a license like this, if you don't know, it's okay. Does that limit who can work at that facility to somebody who is over age 18?
I believe, I believe it does. I will have to double check on that.
Anything else? Alright, this is a public hearing, so I will, um, just as I did with all the comments, start and see if there are any comments on the matter at hand from within the room.
Sam, did you have a question?
Did I?
No, Sam, about the age.
Uh, I was just gonna clarify, I believe it's just restricted to positions at the register. Um, that's my understanding from.
That's.
Regulation.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Yes, very good. Uh, seeing no comments in the room, are there any comments from those attending via Zoom? Alright, uh, then I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to accept and approve the Section 15 Package Store Wines and Malt Beverages License application for the Assabet Village Food Cooperative Incorporated, doing business as Assabet Co-op Market at 86 Powder Mill Road, authorizing use of digital signatures approved.
Second.
I haven't got to use this yet. A motion has been made and seconded all in favor of Justine?
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, all in favor. Uh, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Uh, move to close the public hearing at 7:47.
One second.
Uh, all in favor? Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Sam, thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you to the board and thank you, Chair. Have a good day.
You too. Alright, on to item number eight. Uh, two items related to the tree committee. Uh, the first is the, I believe the first application we've seen for the Cultural District Enhancement Fund grant. Uh, and this is a parking lot enhancement for a pollinator garden for the lot on Summer Street. Uh, and so Greg, any other details you'd like to add before I?
Um, I think everything is pretty much there. Um, I can just say, uh, I have a, since this is the first time we've reviewed the application, we've been, Greg Johnson and I have been kind of working through the best logistical way. So we've been able to contact all the relevant departments. Um, and we have not really received any, we've only received good feedback.
Uh, and in addition, what you said, I did receive feedback from the chair of the planning board also stating that they support the project and that's, I'm sorry, but this is in line with the downtown overlay district guidelines. So another, another place of support there. Uh, do we have a member of the tree committee or somebody to speak on behalf of the project?
Yes, hi, uh, this is Danny Schissler. I'm a member of the tree committee. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the project tonight. Um, I do have a very brief presentation. If you permit me to share my screen, is that acceptable?
Yes, in just a moment.
Great.
Okay, go ahead.
Great, thank you so much. Okay. So I'm very pleased to present our application for a CDF grant for a pollinator garden in the heart of downtown Maynard. Um, our request is seeking funding in the amount of $6,000 to support site prep and the purchase of plants and soil amendments for the beautification and climate resilience project uh, on this, at the, at the Summer Street parking lot, which you can see here. Uh, it, the project aims to convert roughly 1,000 square feet of highly visible urban traffic island into pollinator, uh, a pollinator friendly native shade tree and pollinator rain garden with educational signage. And you can see the project site here. As part of Maynard's Week of Trees Celebration, which will be next week, volunteers will actually create the shady pollinator waste station and permaculture garden with native shade tree plantings and other perennial species that you can see here. Uh, the garden design is also shown here, courtesy of Steve Smith, Tree Committee and Tree Core member. Um, the garden will form part of Maynard's townwide downtown arboretum project, which began three years ago with plantings of carefully selected climate forward native trees. Um, additional funding in the amount of $3,000 for planting material, including tree shrubs and wildflowers, has already been secured through the One Tree Planted Foundation. Um, concrete removal, which you can see in the left, uh, two pictures, has already been completed courtesy of Maynard DPW. Many thanks to Justin DiMarco and his team for his assistance there. Additional site prep was completed last, uh, week and you can see the two pictures on the right hand side with the removal of deleterious fill, fill material and the addition of, uh, good planting soil. We believe that this grant supports Maynard's master plan, community development, uh, principles, local rapid recovery plan and veterans memorial park plan by accomplishing the following. Uh, increasing the urban tree canopy and restoring ecological vibrancy in the downtown, ameliorating, uh, urban heat island effect, utilizing a unused rundown urban space to provide ecological, educational and economic benefits. And finally, continuing to enhance the business environment of, of downtown Maynard by beautifying the landscape. Uh, and I'll just add that to date, we've received, uh, support from the DPW director and tree warden, as well as the Maynard Planning Board and Town Planner, the Sustainability Committee, the Economic Development Committee and Green Maynard. And we respectfully request that the select board consider our request for a grant to help green and beautify our town center. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions on that proposal or the application we have in front of us?
Yeah, I, I actually was down there this past weekend. There's already a tree up, right?
Yeah, there are actually two existing trees. One's a mature honey locust and then there's a, a younger tupelo that was planted last year.
Um, the, the question I have is with the plantings that were there, um, how do we assure that and snow removal was on that doesn't get dumped on top of these plants and destroy them?
That's a phenomenal question and I have Justin DiMarco's assurance that his team will, uh, do their best to prevent uh, snowplow accumulation on that island. Of course, we can't guarantee anything. And with that in mind, we also choose, uh, species that are, uh, resilient and tolerant of salt, which will inevitably end up on the island.
Thank you. Yes, my question is similar as far as, and I, I know that it sounds like Justin's been involved from beginning, so, um, so that's good. My question is more of watering the plants. I, I am assuming you're, you're choosing drought tolerant plants, but, um, do you have any other plans for that?
Uh, yeah, so we've, you're, you're correct. We've chosen, uh, drought tolerant plants that we can hopefully establish, um, quickly and won't need a ton of maintenance and watering over time. But we do have, uh, permission to use town watering, water for watering this year. Um, we're also looking into getting some, uh, watering caddies that can be pulled along by volunteers from the tree corps to help establish these plants uh, this year. And we're crossing our fingers that we won't have drought conditions as we did last year. But again, hopefully these plants are native and resilient enough to, to withstand droughts. And the soil improvement should also help with this. It's much better soil. We'll add leaf mulch and compost that will help with water retention as well.
Any other questions? Uh, we have a comment from Chris Arseneau.
Uh, thanks, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just wanted to clarify. Um, I sent a letter to the select board. That was about my support as chairman of the planning board, but we did not take a planning board vote. So I just wanted to be very clear for public record that the, this was not a planning board vote. I don't want that, that comment though, to undermine the great work that, um, this team is doing. Um, particularly, there's a detail that I saw that was maybe the word buried might not be the exact best word, but the detail that they kind of buried in this is that they've spent a lot of time and thoughtfulness making sure that the subsoil conditions are conducive for long-term sustainable growth. And that doesn't always happen with tree, tree plantings in town. So I think this team should get a lot of credit for that type of work. Thank you.
Uh, thank you for the clarification as well. That was Meyer.
Do, do we have a letter or did?
I, I received it. I can certainly make sure that's uploaded that notice of work.
I sent it to Greg Johnson, not knowing he was on vacation as well. So I meant it to come to this entire committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Danny, can you tell us again what type of the, what type of plants these are? I, I need some, uh, drought resistant plants.
We had a whole tree report. We reviewed together.
Yeah, the tree committee is happy to help you, uh, to select the perfect trees for your property. But what we're planting here are American hop hornbeam uh, as well as I believe hornbeam are the two trees we're going to be planting, um, along with a variety of wildflowers.
Yeah, they have a colorful, uh, flower and bushes.
Uh, one is a, uh, butterfly milkweed. Uh, there's lobelia and geranium maculatum. Which is a native dream. Are the three that we showed. Uh, there are, will be many others as well. So make sure to stop by.
Yeah, thank you.
You good?
Yeah.
Alright.
Mother's Day, Mother's Day is coming.
Alright, any other comments on item A? Then I will accept the motion.
I will move to approve the application for the use of $6,000 from the Cultural District Enhancement Fund, CDF, by the Maynard Tree Committee for the proposed Summer Street Municipal Parking Lot Pollinator Garden Project as presented, authorizing the digital signatures and approved.
Second.
All in favor? Justine? David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you very much. And I'll, I'll note that this is right? This is the first, um, CDF application we've seen. So thank you for setting the bar and, and doing a lot of the prep work and, uh, really appreciate seeing all the, all the diligence that went into this proposal.
It's my pleasure. Thank you so much.
Before I let you go, I think we have a second tree committee item, which is a gift acceptance in front of us. Uh, were you going to speak to that as well?
Actually, I'm gonna pass that off to. Actually, I'm going to pass that off to uh my friend, uh Lee Eiler, who I believe is with you in person.
Ily.
Yes. Just speak briefly about that at the last meeting.
We did.
And uh, there's there are questions, uh, if you can answer them, but I think it was pretty straightforward and actually, um, uh, the same as last year. Um, we're really pleased to have been doing this now, but that will um, appreciate your, uh, gift and we plan carefully um do the watering and um glad to keep doing it again.
Very good. Any questions on item B here? All right.
No.
Good.
I will move to accept the native rain garden trees and plants from the Maynard Tree Committee for this.
Second.
All in favor, Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, gift is accepted. All right, thank you, tree committee. We'll move on to item nine, uh, which uh is bond anticipation notices, so uh, welcome our treasure collector Jen Well. You want to give us a brief overview? I think we had a very similar topic about one year ago, almost today.
We did, exactly. So um last year we did the same thing. We borrowed um one million. Um, the purpose of a short term note is to have the funds available um to use immediately if we need to, and then what will happen is once Justin is ready for the um funding for the much larger project, we'll roll this amount into that large bond, and then it will go out twenty, thirty years.
And, and this is well for A.
It is for well for A, yeah. Um, the bond council did have three proposals, lowest with um and coupon rate, also known as interest rate of four percent, which um actually is pretty good right now because it's been around five, and they took the one with the highest premium. And the premium is um something that they give and that they, it's like they give you benefits, you know, for, for taking it from them, and we'll use that premium to pay the costs of this issue. So um the borrowing is a long drawn out thing, but as mentioned this morning, um, Jeff, all you have to do is move to approve the vote as, you know, prepared by and then you have all the documents to sign, and then we'll be good to go, and then we will be received next threat.
Any questions?
No.
All right.
I will. Actually, do you have to?
I don't believe, I think it's a board decision, so no.
I'll move to adopt the vote prepared by Bond Council in connection with the approval of the town's April bond anticipation note. Authorizing it to be approved.
Backs there. All in favor, Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You too. Uh, item ten, we have two contracts. The first is a two-month extension of our um on-call engineering consultant VHB. Uh, while we are um considering RFP for a further um uh, a further contract after that date. Uh, Greg, are there any details or should we?
I don't have any details myself. Um, yep. Yeah, I think really anything that's in the public contact, kind of for four docs is what I have as well.
Uh, and I think what we're, we're looking at is um some separate options for the new contract, so this is just a two-month extension of the existing one while we work out those details. Any questions on the two-month extension for VHB?
No.
Okay.
I will move to approve the extension with Vanessa Pangen Ursland, Inc., VHB, for on-call engineer consulting services for a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, as presented. Authorizing you to continue to sign.
All in favor, Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Uh, our second item is a change order for the well for a project. Uh, Justin, would you mind speaking to this briefly?
Good evening, Justin Marco, VPW Director. Um, so what we have here is a change order as we start to progress into the phase two aspect of our well for a treatment plant process. As the boards are aware, we had to break this project into two based off the overall costs. Um, we are starting to move, we contracted with our phase two contractor, which is Winston Builders. And in that aspect, they are actually conducting some of the more dynamic processes that take place, which is the treatment facility upgrades to handle the new well source. With that comes um many variables and material changes based off the original design for availability of materials. When that happens, we have to shop prep tech and approve those. Sometimes those come as change orders. So in regards to your previous change orders, where you see, you saw some with associated impressive of forty million dollars, those will really add on. These are minor change orders based off availability of materials, so that's why it looks like sixteen ninety fifteen. But with base two, you'll probably see the significant amount of smaller change orders on a more regular basis, just because of the complex and dynamic nature of that construction. But in front of you is a change order request with sixteen thousand nine hundred sixty dollars.
Any questions on the change order request?
And thi- this is not on, if not really unanticipated. In other words, we're well within our reason, reasonable amounts relative to rate increases and everything like that.
Correct, so this falls, so we kind of heard Jen talk about the ban of the um anticipatory notes. The reason that sometimes dynamic projects have large scale cost contracts, we don't deferral anything upfront because there is potential change within the, the estimated cost of the overall product. So we ban them so that we have an accurate cost, but these change orders will come and go up and down in every flows. Based on the allowance and the authority of the board as the contract manager, you have to approve these amounts because it changes the contract value. But when we actually close out the dock, sometimes it's actually less than. So this is really an admin role aspect of this, so we build in ten to fifteen percent contingency in contract, and sometimes that's super steeped. But yes, it will not affect the current rates right now, dude. This has already been accounted for in the previous two rate.
Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the change order PCO zero zero one as presented with Winston Builders for the well for a water treatment plant upgrade space to construction contract number one three seven six in the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred sixteen dollars.
All in favor, Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Moving on to item eleven, we have three items for the Department of Public Works, the first of which is a collaboration with the Cultural Council. Uh, are you going to be setting this up or is somebody from the Cultural Council going to be? This is the
I can check.
Ross. This is a cross block. That's the first one up. Right, Brad didn't have a
Oh, that's okay. It is.
Andy, good evening. How are you?
Um, Andy Moreline, one twenty-three Summer Street, Maynard, Massachusetts.
Thank you. I think we've, we've read the background in the project. Could you just give us a high level overview of uh the plan?
Yes, uh, we're working with the high school. I'm working with John Flynn, the art teacher at the high school. He's working with uh students at the school. Um, and they are doing the design. We're working together to clarify the design and we'll run it past the Maynard as a canvas and a group of uh selected people in the community as we always do. Um, we're really just seeking support at this point for moving this project forward. We have funding for the paints and any other things that are going to come up from the Maynard Cultural Council. This is a cultural council, a cultural district funded project. And um we'd like to move it forward while the school year is still going on, so it's coming along here pretty fast. If it doesn't get done this May, then we'll figure out a time, but we have students who are eager to do it and work with us on it. I think it'll be an exciting addition. This is the first of, we hope, several will make this a repeating project over the years, but we need to have a proof of concept. So we chose the Fine Art Studio to the parking lot crosswalk as a good starting point.
And so we don't have a design yet, but the high schoolers will be creating that design. Is that correct?
That is correct. We have it. It's a, they're on break this week, so I'm not going to get anything from this week. I've looked at four designs so far. They all look okay. We need to clean them up a little bit. But I'm sure that, you know, what we'll do is take those and run them through a graphic. Um, you know, designer, if that's what we need to do, that'll be one of the steps to get one that's um bright, colorful, cheerful and adequate for May- Maynard's uh first crosswalk.
Any questions?
Are you planning on, I know that you've requested the police details, um, or, or payment for the police details. Do you know if they're going to plan on closing the roads? I'm just curious how long, I know it's quick drying paint, but I'm just curious how, how quick drying it is.
Uh, my understanding is that we should be able to get this done in a four-hour period from seven PM to eleven or so. I'm hoping the students will be done by nine or nine thirty, ten o'clock, so we can get them home in bed. It's going to be either a Sunday or Monday. It's probably going to be Monday and Tuesday. I think we'll prep it on uh Monday, which would be a later work night. It would probably just be adults doing it so that we can get both sides of the street done in one night. It's basic. It's a flat color and a color background. Wait half an hour and then you can move the cones and do the other half. If the humidity is good, half an hour, you can drive right over these things, probably even less than that. Um, and so I'm optimistic, but I'll be frank, I've never used this material before. I, I understand it will be um, a challenge, but I don't think it's impossible. I pretty much, I've read through all the specs and other towns that have done it. And uh it goes pretty smoothly. We're going to make sure we have a design that's doable with small rollers, various sized rollers, and it will go pretty fast.
Are we planning to give a heads up to Fine Art?
Uh, yeah, that's a good idea, Jeff. I'm so sorry. I, I would, I, we're doing it on a day when they're closed. Quite specifically, they
Very good.
Yes, and they close early on Sunday, so it's Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, quite specifically to decrease uh pedestrian traffic and to reduce the amount of car traffic that are going to be inconvenienced. We hope to do one lane at a time. I have not sat down and talked with the police chief for details on whether one lane at a time is okay with everyone or whether we should just shut the whole street, and then which case we would maybe even press to get it done all in one, in, in two nights. One night both sides with a prep caller, one night with the design, but I suspect it would be a better pace to do half a lane and then keep one lane open and then do half a lane the following night and one lane open.
Any other questions? All right, so there's two motions. One is for the project, and then one is to um approve of funding for police detail from our community events balance. This is a smaller uh cost than we would have for, say, a Memorial Day parade for, for something like that, so. Um, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the modifications to the crosswalk appearances as presented and move to, uh, that's the second one, so.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, Justine?
Yes.
Uh, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
I'll follow that up with a motion to approve the use of community events funds in support of the project.
Second.
Uh, all in favor, Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you, Andy.
Thank you very much.
Uh, our next DPW item is proposed electric vehicle public charging station rate fees.
Yeah, so it is at the time of year. Uh, we just recently um took care of a new PPA rate. Um, the town administrator um recently had the board approve a contract for the change of the power purchase agreement that provides our electricity cost to the town of Maynard. Um, and as anticipated, row, the Commonwealth electricity commodity markets are going up at a rate of anywhere between twelve, uh, twenty to thirty percent. Our PPA rate was able to actually reduce that twenty to thirty percent. Um, under twenty percent, but that affects our electric vehicle charging stations as a whole because the original fee that we were um adopted under our EV charging rates was the exact cost of our electricity plus one percent for warranty and mechanical repairs. So now we have to adjust a rate to keep up with our chain and utility costs, so this is just a reflection of our recent
Any questions on the proposed change?
Have we? Should I have to look now? I forgot. Um, do we know how much money we have taken in for?
Where?
For that revolving fund?
Yeah, so how much money we have taken in an expense store? How much have we looked at profit?
Both? I, I'm just curious, like, how, how much, how much is being used?
So I will tell you that we monitor this. Uh, we have a a dashboard that came with uh with the product itself, and we have seen um an incremental increase to the use of the EV station over the past three months. With that, um, significant besides just the PPA rate, there's also a demand charge, so electricity is used at peak demand hours. Um, there's also a demand charge. A majority of our EV stations we're monitoring are really utilized throughout that nine to five PM aspect. So really, the library has been used quite often, near records being used quite often, actually town hall being used quite often. We're seeing a consistent trend with use, but overall, I would tell you that it, it's a fluctuation of uh eight to ten thousand dollars per year. I do anticipate them uh to continue to increase as electricity vehicle reserves, vehicles are purchased by resident, and they're looking for locations to, where they're reasonable.
Are the golf course ones paying you?
So they, we don't see them in the wind because really nobody's using them, so I anticipate you'll see them being put um as golf season, Jeff, getting underway.
I would think that um this is just sort of theoretical as we move forward. Even the planning board is there looking at projects should make electrical, electric charging stations a mandatory portion of the larger projects uh residential and otherwise uh to assure that we're keeping up with the time and don't get in a position with the town ten years from now. It's being told by the Commonwealth, by the US government, that you must have X number. We should be sort of proactive in that regard.
So David, I can't give you, it's kind of a little off, off base here, but actually as a green community in adoption of the required stretch code enhancement as a green community, all facilities, residential, commercial will be required to um allow infrastructure for future Now, the planning board could definitely adopt rules and regulations that take on their role much more stringent than what the stretch code is. But an applicant may not push back. It's hard that they're required to put the infrastructure in place that should accommodate. So that's definitely a conversation. I think that's something that the board needs potentially um put forth with the Sustainability Committee and the Coalition, we have planned, etc. But I will tell you that um our stretch energy code is moving in that direction for private development and for the public sector. Um, every, you know, we don't fill facilities that often in the town of Maynard, but I will tell you that part of the dream little um schematic design, EV stations are included. And um there will be a steady influx of grant funding. We were able to secure all our community stations one hundred percent on grant funded. We'll continue to pursue those um opportunities that they would
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the electrical vehicle public charging stations user rate fees as, as presented by the Department of Public Works Director's memorandum dated March twenty-three.
Second.
All in favor, Justine?
Yes.
Uh, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, our last item is uh related to water pollution abatement projects.
Yes, so don't treat the messenger on the recommended action because that's the legal recommended action under the statute law for authorization for the grant. But a general overview, as you are aware, as the Water and Sewer Commissioners, um, that we had a lead exceedance in our public notices when I last year, and you will actually see notices come around again this year as once your um exceedance of that, we have several years of notification process going underway, and we have increased that. As previously stated, we do not have lead pipes in our facilities, but we do, we, the town of Maynard, residential facilities and commercial facilities, et cetera, do have lead pipe that leaching can have an impact on the end result, which is the water that comes out of a faucet. So E P A and E P have been, uh, let me actually rephrase that. E P A. Has been really contending with how to resolve this issue because a number of utilities do not own a piping on residential or private property yet. E P A doesn't necessarily have regulatory authority on private property, so it's that public private aspect. But the water does have a connection point. So E P A uh has been contending with this ever since Flint, Michigan, which is several years ago. Uh, with all the lead, the recent I R A, Opera Funding Acts and some policy changes. There have become availability of funds to address this at locales typically didn't have. With that being said, the E P A, the I R A funds and Opera funds have now finally hit the state of Massachusetts, which nasty key now has programs. Allowed for locales such as the town of Maynard to pursue funding to um improve. The lead uh asset management systems within our uh within our programs. To help address or to communicate with private residents, their specific locations and assets that may be an issue for their. Public drinking water. When I say their issue is. You could have Mr. Swamber, who does not have lead pipes, and Justine, who does have lead pipes. It is a plumbing situation in your house, but some residents are not aware that they may have in their house. So this asset system is a grant fund that will one hundred percent fund um. This inventory, which will allow the public utility to start to be able to um have a public outreach. In a particular situation to help residents address the issue. I do foresee with uh more funding opportunities, replacement programs of private property as well. Um, you'll see these in larger cities. When you're talking about public utilities, the E P aims for, there's three criteria. Thirty-five thousand plus, which is your Boston Springfield, et cetera. Your larger metropolitan areas. Ten to thirty-five thousand, which is Maynard, but we're really right on that in ten thousand and under. That's their tiered programs. Um, for. Over a decade, the thirty-five thousand plus has received money for lead. Lead asset management. We're now starting to see that excess funding from the federal government is allowing the. Best the E P to really focus on that end of thirty-five thousand rand in that ten thousand and hundred, which is us. So we're looking for opportunity to really. Um, Mass General in regards to the state revolving trust has very specific. And that is why the recommended action for trick. So I'm looking for authority to apply corporate.
Any questions?
One comment uh regarding if we have to put out notices again.
Hmm.
Um, if we couldn't try to be as proactive as possible and. There are still people who say uh Maynard has lead in his water and uh.
Well, it does.
Yes.
It's not even slightly, meaning some person local could have.
Yeah, that's the point. And but I think the, there are people out there that say that it is pervasive in our water. And that we got all got the notice and.
So we are proactive. So our uh templated notices, they say that the E P requires it to be the same. That it gets approved by the E P, et cetera. The first notification process is a very tight timeline because the E P has to prove it. But based on the fact that our exceedance already happened and we have three to five years of continual um. Education and timelines, we've already started the process for the E P to review our pamphlet and we've already asked our um. Our vendor to start to put it together so that we can prove it in advance. My expectation is that the board will have um the pamphlet on a correspondence prior to its mailing. So it's out there. We'll even put it on our Facebook page. Prior to as well.
The pamphlet?
Yeah, but the pamphlet will not change much. It is required by the E P to be worded in a very.
But but and that's fine. We just need to make that point really, really clear. So it's not. Because you know, the pamphlet, although it's generic in the sense of what the feds want on on the report.
Right.
But it's also, it says Maynard, so therefore it's. It's seen as case specific.
It is the situation that every public utility pushes back on E P A and E P to be a little more specific. But it is the manner in which they want it presented, it is a policy gap.
Yeah, and it's really just, it's just. Public education and information uh spreading and passing out so that it's not a panic.
I will tell you that we do, last year was our first um public drinking water and sewer educational. This was done at um Maynard Fest. We continue to plan to do that moving forward. With that being said, anything that happens in regards to public drinking water will address and continue to educate. Accordingly, our new platform, the town website platform, has changed graphic. There's a lot of information that was carried over from the previous platform. But our new platform allows for notification processes, things that we didn't have prior. That help us be a little more proactive in certain aspects. So we're hoping that once we put it on the website, that it's a reminder that all our residents who signed up in the notification process will get that in advance.
The main message that of that Missouri restaurant uh residents need to hear is that this, the source of the lead was not from town. Pay up to the town distribution. How can we improve getting that message out? Given, given we can't do it through the pamphlet, and I know we've discussed that.
Right, we, we consistently, and I know the board doesn't see this from the data. So we will consistent. Guide that every concern be addressed directly with the D P W. Because at that point, we can have a conversation with each resident, which actually doesn't have that process. Well, we have to identify each patient. And residents can do this through a number of factors. They can test their own piping system, which is actually a situation that they can do and can do whatever they. Buy at home. It's one of those things where. Policy allows or mandates that you pass the lead paint. So there's just a large amount of gaps um in a number of overlapping industry, but. I highly suggest that any conversation being said. That any residence concerned be directed towards the Maynard Department of Public Works. We will address each resident accordingly. We will guide them appropriately.
And I agree that, you know, people should go to the source, but in the world we live in, we live in a social media world. Where people write these things that Maynard has. Uh, you know, and and we're still seeing it almost a year after. Uh, so the message didn't get out. To a lot of people and then it's it's indicative of the fact that it's not just that one person posting it because people jump on. Yeah, I got that too. Nobody's done anything. Nothing's happened, you know. They haven't tested my house, you know, that type of.
Well, we don't get the test.
But that's, that's, that's the issue. It's, I'm not gonna sit there on social media. Jeff's not gonna sit there on social media. Arguing with people or putting out facts. That's not, that's not our role. But we need to get the education out there.
We, we do address that. But sometimes you can't.
Bang, we need to do a better job.
Any other questions? We're starting to rehash the conversation we had the first time around.
I assure you, this is a, this is one of several dozen issues that are going down the front. E P F is another one.
Alright, there is a motion in front of us. If there are no other questions on the topic.
I'll move to grant designated authority to the Department of Public Works Director Justin DiMarco. To act on behalf of the applicant, town of Maynard, as its agent in filing applications for executing agreements regarding. And performing any and all other actions necessary to secure for the applicant such as grants and or loans. For construction or planning of water pollution abatement projects or drinking water projects. As may be made available to the applicant pursuant to the provisions of the Massachusetts Clean Waters Act, M G L Chapter. Twenty-one, sections twenty-seven and thirty-three E inclusive, inclusive as amended. And the water pollution abatement revolving loan program, Master on the laws, chapter twenty-nine C. For the following project, establishing a formal inventory of existing water service lines and materials, including data review and documentation. Field investigation support and summary memorandum.
Second.
All in favor? Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you, Justin. Alright, uh, next up, we have um. The warrant. Uh, so we've been reviewing this for the past, I don't know how many meetings, but here is the final. I think the first thing we're seeing is the town moderator's recommendations on how to package the uh rather lengthy list that we have today, so. Um, are there any questions on on the warrant? On most of the individual topics we've covered in subsequent or uh previous meetings?
Do you wanna say? Because I've waited every opportunity. The town meeting is Monday, May fifteenth at seven P M. So at Fowler School.
Inside?
Inside, yes. I did have a question about the um. The moderators. Oh, maybe it. No, never mind. I'm I'm okay.
Oh, good?
Yep.
Alright.
And for public certification, there are thirty-eight articles, so we can anticipate that it will be a uh. A lengthy and somewhat difficult meeting. But it's important that we get participation of all of our voter voting residents. And uh, a town meeting is the most basic form of democracy that there is, and it's very important to participate.
Great, sorry. No, I just wanted to make sure um that the board received the, has the the final version. Great. Last and changes uh just semantics.
Alright, any question on the warrant? Alright. I'll entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the warrant for the town annual town meeting. Twenty twenty-three as presented, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
All in favor, Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Alright, we will move on. To item thirteen, um, the Green Meadows Building Projects. Uh, the first one is a formal approval of the updated committee membership list listing Chris Silva. Um, in in two locations, still a spot vacated by Justine. So we've discussed this at the last couple of meetings. This is just the motion to approve that membership list, and of course, we can revisit. Any questions on this first item?
No, but I will approve, move to approve the Green Meadow School Building Committee Membership List as presented.
Second.
All in favor, Justine?
Yes.
Uh, David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. And next we have, uh, we have a standing update for updates on the Green Meadow School Building Project. We do have a presentation. I see Jerry Colbert is online. Good evening. How are you?
Very good, thank you.
Good. Uh, Chris from M V G and Phil from Colliers.
Very good. Who will be giving the update?
I will. Uh, I'll be presenting along with Phil.
Very good. Could you just introduce yourself briefly each please?
Sure, my name's Crystal Blank. I'm project manager with Mount Vernon Group Architects.
Uh, Phil Palumbo, director with Colliers, with the owner's project manager on the project.
Good evening.
Yeah, Jerry Calvert, uh, chaired the school building committee, uh, a little bit. Oak Ridge Drive in Maynard.
Thank you. Uh, and we're pointing at the slides, or are we gonna have them present?
I cannot, I can allow you just one second.
So if I could share my screen?
We're, we're granting you permission. Just give us a second.
Okay.
Okay, you should be good to go.
Alright, everybody can see that?
Yes.
Uh, Chris, can you go to the next slide with the members? Thank you. Uh, I'm just gonna take a minute. Uh, I know everybody can see this, but I did want to just take a a couple of moments to read down this list. Uh, of of who the members are. It's a fairly large committee. Um, this committee, the makeup is not the specific people, but the categories. Is a requirement established by the uh M S B A. So we follow that. Now, we did the same thing when we did the high school project a number of years ago. So going down the list, again, Jerry Calvert, uh, community rep. Uh, Greg Johnson, as you know, town administrator, Brian Haas, school superintendent. Rob Savoy, director of building facilities. Rob Rulo, principal of Green Meadow School. Jennifer Gardette is a community representative. Katie Moore, finance committee member. Anthony Beday, community representative. Nick Kane, community rep and co-chair of this committee. Krista Silva, wearing many hats, at least two, uh, select board member. Mary Bradley, school committee. Justin DiMarco, D P W director. Hillary Griffiths, school committee. Charles Gabron, special projects coordinator for the school department. Wayne White, school department business manager. Mark Anderson, community rep. Matthew Johann, community rep. And Ken Newhauser, sustainability committee representative. And therein lies your school building committee. And uh, I would turn this over to, I think, to Phil or Chris. I'm not sure. Who's first?
To me. Thanks, Jerry. So on this slide, I'll just step through kind of a two month look ahead for for project timeline. Um, so we're planning on submitting the schematic design submission that was approved by the building committee last week. To the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Jerry mentioned M S B A. That's, that's them uh on April twenty-seven. We have scheduled a May third community forum, uh, currently planned to be at Green Meadow Elementary School, uh, starting at seven P M. Uh, once the, once that's um finalized, we'll get that posted to the project website, town website and and project Facebook page. Um, and then the upcoming building committee meetings are scheduled for May eighth and June fifth. And then June twenty-first is the M S B A board of directors meeting. In which they approve the schematic design submission and ultimately approve the the execution, if you will, of the project scope and budget agreement. With the town. Next slide, Chris? And to give a more kind of macro schedule overview, um, so like I mentioned, April twenty-seventh would be the schematic design submission to M S B A. June twenty-first is that uh M S B A board of directors meeting to get their approval on uh the schematic design and and project scope and budget agreement. And then from that point, you move into the local vote process. Right now, we're targeting October tenth for the town meeting vote for the project that still needs to be finalized, but. That's the current date we're looking at, and then November seventh for the dead exclusion vote. If the project's approved, it would then move uh on into the rest of design. And then bidding would then happen towards the end of twenty twenty-four with construction starting thereafter. And then the the plan would be that the new building would be constructed and occupiable for the winter break of twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. Um, and then once students and staff are in the new building, the existing building would be abated, knocked down, and we would finish site work. Um, so construction being uh final completed uh towards the spring of twenty twenty-seven. And then kind of the M S B A paperwork closeout process always takes around a year. Uh, so you're looking at spring twenty twenty-eight of of final project completion. With that, I'll hand it over to Chris for the design update.
Thank you, Phil. So as part of our schematic design submission, M S B A puts out. A module set of guidelines for this, um, and it's basically the same for every M S B A project. And that basically includes all these topics. So I'll run through some of the big picture items. Um, the D E S C, which is Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Submission. Uh, that contains special education delivery methodology from the school district. Space summary um that shows that the special education spaces match not only the education program for the district. But also the M S B A guidelines for um special education spaces. The D E S C floor plans, which will identify and locate the special education spaces. M S B A likes to make sure that these spaces are not clustered in one area, but instead spread out through throughout the school. Uh, for full inclusion. And then the special education adjacency table showing all the support uh support spaces. Uh, for those special education uh core classrooms. The schematic design binder uh includes a bulk of the documents that outline the schematic design. Um, there are several narratives that are part of the introduction in the final design program. Outlining various things from aesthetics, um. outlining various things from aesthetics, sustainability, focal of the of the school billing security, et cetera. Our traffic study, environmental and geotechnical reports are included as part of that binder. We do a code analysis and code review drawings, utility analysis for the existing utilities available. The building system descriptions based on the various meetings we held with the building committee that we're looking to put into this building for mechanical, electrical, plumbing and fire protection systems. Room data sheets are something M S B A likes to see for each space in the project. They will outline things such as casework, furniture, you know, outlets, lighting, utility areas, teaching stations, et cetera. There's a construction methodology narrative. The building committee voted to approve a design bid build methodology as opposed to a C M at risk. And then we had the total project budget and cost estimates from both the designers estimator and the independent estimator that we we work with through the O P M. And then you have your local approvals and actions for various things along the process during schematic design, some of which would include the building committee's approval to submit that schematic design to M S B A. This is schematic design project manual includes the outlined specifications. So this is the outlined specifications for all the equipment and materials that are planned for this building. And then any proprietary items that we would want to include in this building that maybe the district has standardized in their school system. The schematic design drawing appendix will include all the schematic design drawings. That's basically including the original site survey, site development plans, landscape plans, the code review analysis drawings, floor plans and elevations, interior elevations, room data sheets, and some of the some of the renderings that you'll see tonight. And then the appendixes also include things like the P S R review comment. So when we did the P S R submission several months ago, M S B A reviews that submission, they submit comments, and then we provide our responses. That's also included in the submission. So they use that to compare the the things that we're submitting now to make sure that you know, we're continuing on the same path all along. There's a preliminary furniture budget and a preliminary technology budget for the new school included. And then all the building committee meeting minutes, the department meeting minutes, the staff meeting minutes that we've participated since schematic design started back in, I believe it was August. And then the various presentations from the building committee, the tri boards meeting that we had last month, and then this meeting, those will all be included. It gives M S B A a good idea of the progress and the information that's been presented throughout the schematic design process.
Are these documents up on the website now?
So?
Yeah, so it was written regarding the schematic design submission. So that was approved on Monday. Mount Vernon Group is kind of finalizing, so it's one binder. And then they're gonna be posted to the project website, just like the two other Massachusetts School Building Authority submissions are. So so not yet, but in in days' time, they will be. And we'll make sure we post it on the project Facebook page that they're up and and accessible.
So the full, the full package already exists and has been approved by the building committee?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so the design, there's no, there's no further work in the design between now and the submission date of, I think it was the twenty seventh?
Correct.
Correct. So continuing on, I'll basically just present the the plans that basically were included as part of that tri boards meeting and the recent building committee meeting that they reviewed for, you know, the submission approval. So initially, we just have the general overall site plan showing the various improvements. The existing building is shown in the black dotted line somewhat in the middle of the developed area. Just to review, we will come in off Tiger Great Road, which is up the upper right hand corner. Come in through the drive, the drive will split into two locations. One will continue around the back of the building to the parent drop off and the shipping, receiving and additional parking area. The front drive will peel off for the bus drop off at the front of the building, and that will also access the staff and visitor parking areas. Both of those will then collect and then exit back out on Tiger Drive to Great Row. The first floor plan is very similar to what you saw. There have been no changes since the tri board meeting or since the approval for the schematic design building committee meeting last week. The core education spaces are in yellow. The building is divided up into three basic parts. We have a central core for the common spaces and community areas. And then we have two identical wings. So one on the right is for the pre K kindergarten wings. The one on the left would be grade one. The yellow spaces are for academic classrooms. The light blue spaces would be special education classrooms and support spaces. The brown are administration spaces. And then the two various greens would be the gymnasium, cafeteria, and platform and kitchen areas, the common and community spaces. The back would include also music suite and custodial receiving and shipping area. The second floor lays out very similar to the first floor in that there are two educational neighborhood classroom wings with a central core area. So on the second floor, to the right, we would have grades three with special education spaces. And the lower left would be grade two, again, with special education and support spaces. The common core on the second floor includes a guidance suite, which places administration eyes on the second floor, along with a media center and library, and then an S T E room for project based learning and an art room. One of the things that are that are common to both floors is one central corridor, which makes it very easy wayfinding for the younger students of this particular school project. And then we move on to two renderings that will give everybody an idea of how the building will sit once the sites develop. We have Great Row at the lower portion of the rendering. Tiger Drive comes in, will loop around. And then, as noted on the overall site plan, will split buses and staff visitor parking in the front. Parents would continue around to the back along with deliveries, custodial space and additional parking in the rear. And to the right of the school building and adjacent, you'll see two play areas for the pre K and kindergarten and grades one through three. Those will have age appropriate play structures, safety surfacing, et cetera. And then our final rendering would be a shot from the south looking towards the rear of the building. You see the parent drop off that comes around, single lane drives that drops off students to an area which can be monitored with additional parking and back around. The roof area I will note is planned to be populated with photovoltaic or solar panels so that we can recoup some of the energy for the school. And we can move on.
Thanks, Chris. So on this slide, I'll step through the the overall total project budget that was approved by the building committee for inclusion in the schematic design submission to M S B A. And well, I'll start off by saying that the the initial step is is us producing this total project budget breakdown that you see in that chart to the right of the slide based off of M S B A's reimbursement policies and in our project's reimbursement rate. We submitted via the schematic design submission, and then they get back to us on any concerns or corrections they feel like are needed to that budget breakdown. But ultimately, this is our first pass at it, and we feel confident that ultimately the the budget associated with the project scope and budget agreement is gonna be, if not this, very close to it. So I'll start with the the content on the left of the slide. A total project budget of eighty three point six million. Within that total project budget, you have a construction budget of sixty six point nine. So the the difference between those two numbers would be your soft costs. So O P M fee, design team fee, contingency for change order, furniture technologies, scopes like that. And then based off of M S B A's reimbursement policy in in our project reimbursement rate of fifty eight point seven six percent, you'd be looking at a M S B A share of of thirty five percent max of total dollars spent. And then a local share of the remaining sixty five percent of total dollars spent. Now I'll try at a a high level, kind of describe the content in this chart to the right of the slide. So the first column to the left is essentially all the budget blocks, if you will, summing up the the total project budget. So the first three rows are associated with the construction budget. So you got building, you've got site, and you got demo and abatement. And that's, that's how the M S B A kind of organizes their thoughts on how they break down the budget and and how they create their kind of construction cost reimbursement policies, if you will. And then the remaining budget blocks below those construction items are the soft costs. So you got the the design team labeled labeled as architect. You got O P M. You got remaining soft costs like permitting, material testing, cost estimating, items like that. F F and E is is furniture, technology, and then contingency. So that, and then the the second column from the left is the cost column. So the the sum of all those numbers adds up to that eighty three point six million dollar total project budget. Then the third column from the left that's titled eligible, what we're showing in all those cells is how the M S B A breaks down those values. So for building costs, they have a cap of three hundred and ninety three dollars a square foot. So they take that factor and they multiply it by the building square footage, and they say that is your cap for your building costs. So that's shown there and and kind of so on and so on. Ultimately, the content in all those cells is 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 how M S B A kind of puts a cap, if you will, on on the different budget block items. They create, they they go through that eligible cost math equation for each of these budget blocks, and they get a total sum. So at the bottom of that call, that column titled eligible, you'll see fifty million one hundred and seventy thousand dollars approximately. So that would be your your total eligible costs. You then multiply your project's reimbursement rate times that total eligible cost, and that creates or produces the M S B A's max share, and and that's that thirty five percent for total dollars spent that we're showing. So again, that's the that that's what we're, that's what we're submitting with a schematic design submission. And ultimately, what we're anticipating to see for a a budget breakdown between M S B A share and local share. That was our last slide, so we'd open it up to any questions anybody might have.
So initially, the plans called for the select board to vote to approve the schematic design before submission. We were then informed that that vote was not necessary. Our understanding at that time was that the building committee would be approaching the select board. I believe the language from the M S B A is that the vote is not required. It is highly recommended at that time, as well as the school committee. Our understanding was the building committee would be coming to the select board and the school committee for votes to approve the project. Are you still planning to do that before now and the town meeting in the fall?
We could absolutely do that, yeah. In terms of the schematic design submission, the building the building
I understand we passed, we passed by the schematic design submission. I'm saying are is the building committee, and maybe this is for the chair, planning to come to the select board and the school committee for votes to endorse the project between now and the fall town meeting?
Head on news. Yes, we would be doing that.
And on what time?
What timeframe?
Yeah.
I I actually have to defer to to Phil on that one for a timeframe for when we would do that. There's, there's a M S B A votes June twenty seventh on schematic design, right? When they approve it on?
Yeah, June twenty first. So I I think ultimately, I I think the big thing right now for the building committee is finalizing the H vac system selection. And our goal is to to have that finalized at the June fifth building committee meeting, if not before. So I I think that's a big item that the building committee wants to get figured out and finalized. And at that point, I think post that, it's a hundred percent we can have the select board presentation, school committee presentation to seek their project approval.
Perfect.
Can you talk a bit? I'm sorry, Jerry, did you have something?
No, I just, I just said perfect. That's it.
Do you talk about the format and preparation for the community forum, which I think you said was on May third?
Sure. So the thought is to to give kind of the overall project overview and because the the hope is folks that have not been attending the building committee meetings, community forums to date, et cetera. They don't know about the project yet potentially. So give them a project overview and then try to get some some more community feedback on the topic of the H vac system. Because again, we want to get that decision finalized and behind us as it relates to geothermal or or gas fired.
Any questions?
Comment or question, I guess. On other projects that you've done relative to before moving the schematic design to the M S B A, has the elected boards voted to move that forward prior to it actually being moved forward?
No, it's the building committee typically.
What caused the discrepancy in understanding here, moving into the potential December vote, it was our understanding that the select board would be voting on the design, then we decided we were uncomfortable with the status of the project at that time and asked the M S B A for and received a four month extension. And now that understanding has shifted. So where was the miscommunication back in December about the required order of votes?
So potentially, the thought was seeking the select board's approval just based off of how feedback has been coming at the project. But ultimately, in terms of M S B A policy, they require the building committee vote, and and that's it.
But you didn't think that was important this time around?
No, but didn't Greg say that part of his concern? So he put it on. He basically and I know that I I publicly said something to him, you know, during the last time. So he had put it on, you know, on our agendas because it was the assumption that this is the way that that would follow. Is that the building committee would do it, and then the select board would do it without realizing, because again, none of us had built a school before, without realizing that that was not actually a requirement. So we had four more months, and we started looking into a number of different things, and that was one of the things that they found.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question, and I don't know, I might put Phil or Chris on the spot. One of the conversations that I keep, one of the questions I keep getting is about is about the H V A C system, is about the lack of air conditioning in in the school. And I was just curious of the research that I have done on air cooled beams is that it is something that is an industry accepted practice for office buildings in schools. And so it's not like you're building a school that has, you know, we're not building a hot box for for the kids. It's more that, you know, this is a inefficient way to cool a building, but it's not labeled air conditioning per se. Is that correct? Am I right in my research?
Justine, are you talking about the air displacement system?
Yes, yep.
Um, yeah, so we've done a number of projects with the air displacement system. Air conditioning is provided in the building in select locations such as administration, media center, the gym cafeteria, special education classrooms. And then a air displacement system in the core classroom areas. That, what I'll do is I'll actually, we have Marty Vicki from, you know, our mechanical engineer, and I can have him explain it a little bit more detail for you. Marty?
Sure, thanks, Chris. Yeah, the displacement ventilation system for other than the areas Chris just mentioned would be provide, would provide dehumidified air to the general classroom areas. So while that's not full air conditioning, air conditioning, it it does provide some cooling to all the spaces. The air is is supplied at a we remove the moisture from it and supply it at a relatively cool temperature, not a cold temperature as typical air conditioning would be. And that improves the indoor air quality throughout the classroom from the way the air is distributed through there and is a cost effective measure to provide dehumidification to the spaces. As Chris had mentioned, we, last couple of schools that we've done have been done with displacement ventilation. It's not new technology. It's been around a long time. Um it's very effective for indoor air quality. And provides a level of dehumidification and cooling throughout the space, but isn't considered full air conditioning.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? We take, I think we're good with the slide. We can see your faces. Very good. Any questions from in the room or on Zoom? Okay. Uh thank you very much for the presentation, there's no motion associated tonight, so that will. Include discussion on re met a school project.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Uh item fourteen, uh we've had this on the agenda for a few meetings now, this is updated based on our comments. Um from the last meeting where uh the question was whether or not. Um we would have to enforce a requirement that public comments be available at all meetings and a few other small details. I don't believe there is any uh need to pass this tonight. Um so this is an option, if we want to take a look at it, we can certainly. Uh take some time with this one, but um if you remember, this was in response to a court decision. Uh in which basically if we allow public comments, if somebody wants to. Spend that entire entire time swearing at us, we have to give them the full block of time equal to other people if they want to do so. So this is basically to put in place a policy um for all of, not just ourselves, but for all of our boards and committees um. And our conversation from last time is it went further than we needed to based on that requirement, so. I will pause here to see if we've had time to review or if we have further comments on it.
I think I would, I still go back to number one where it says, and I know that I know town council waiting on it, the chair is just. His or her designated shall devote a period at each meeting to public comment. I I think it's more, and I think town council made it there, that does not have to happen, but it obviously is an option, and if it is there, we do have to allow people to speak. Um so I think it's more accurate to say can.
Yeah, the Shao language is.
A period to each meeting to public comment, you know. To the extent of law, some something like that, it's not the shit, because we're not telling them they have to have public comment, I want to make sure that they know that that's not. Actually true. Or that we're not requiring it as a select board for all of our boards, for all the boards in town.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, um Chris, anything on this?
No, you're good.
All right, um I will ask Greg to make that change for next time and we'll have it back up. To discuss then. All right, if there's no more comments, no motion at that point, so I don't think town councils here, I think we're just reading the map, very good. Okay, um next we have uh sixty one sixty three Summer Street um. The. Uh town administrators asking for direction on uh potential for a procurement process for. Example, if the community theater wanted to occupy the building, I think the idea would be um while it is still empty, while we're figuring out what to do with it in the long run, so. Uh to move forward along those lines, we would need to have an R F P submitted is the advice. And uh we can structure that as we wanted to, so the the question tonight is, does the board want to provide direction? To the town administrator to begin preparing that R F P.
Are you looking to comment?
I am looking for comment.
Yeah, I would think that from my perspective, I think we should um do all we can to uh continue a relationship with. With acting theater and keep it active at that particular location. Um so whatever Greg can do in order to make that happen. Um I think is important, and I think we should uh pursue that, obviously. That there's also at the same time, at same tracks of running with the group that's looking at the. Future uses, potential uses, building, but while that's going on. Um I don't see a need to uh to remove acting theater, I think they're a benefit to the community and a benefit to uh, you know.
And where that would show up would be in a duration or we'll have to figure out the language around that specifically, so that's that's the question there, but that's one of the many details that would be covered. So we're not here to go over the details that, we're simply here to. Acknowledge that this is a direction we want to consider and have the town administrator put some time in.
Yeah, correct.
Any other comments? Chris?
Nope, nope, just.
So, okay, then there will be no motion on this, but the direction will uh go to the town administrator and he will start working on that document. And the details in it, and he'll report back to us as that progress is made. All right. All right, moving on, we have uh five correspondences tonight. Any questions on any of the correspondences?
We'll move to accept and approve correspondence, A through E.
Uh second.
All in favor?
Uh before we do, I just wanted to comment on one um. David Hall, I just wanted to recognize, he resigned from the council on aging, and Mr. Hall has not only been a. A participant with the council on aging, he's had a number of of different roles throughout his time here in Maynard, and I. Didn't want his resignation from the C O A to go without some type of of acknowledgement and thanks. Uh from the community uh for all of his time and years that he has spent. Uh working for the town that I know from having spoken with him many times that he loves so much. So um thank you, David, and that good luck as you move on in your life.
Thank you. Any other comments on the correspondence? All right, motion is made and seconded, all in favor, Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, correspondences have been accepted. Uh I won't detail the town administrator report, but it's there, um Greg didn't give me any instructions, Greg didn't give Greg any instructions, said anything, didn't. Did not, very good, so that is set it there for for us and um. Any comments on the town administrative report?
Other than just to remind residents of the election that's coming up on May the second. Similar to town meeting on May the fifteenth.
Yeah, fifteen.
Fifteenth, uh very important to participate, uh because that's how we get things done, is by participation.
All right, two uh sets of minutes.
I will move to accept and approve the meeting minutes of March twenty first and April fourth at twenty point three F J.
Any comments, questions, or discussion on the two sets of minutes? All right, all in favor, Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Uh I do not have items tonight for the chair report, so we will go right to board member reports, Justine?
I do not have anything for the board member.
David?
Just a quick comment, um I posted something online about this over the weekend, I I just happened to be downtown on Saturday. And um uh our children's librarian, Mark Malcolm, was over in Memorial Park. Having uh story time outside, a beautiful Saturday morning with. Oh, it wasn't a huge crowd, but there were probably ten kids there with their parents. And I was across the way at Marcus Barber shop and wonderful. And you could hear the children laughing, you could hear them participating, you can uh see Mark. We all know Mark, we all know how he uh how he is and how he interacts with children, and it was just such a fabulous thing to see. Um but downtown that on a Saturday morning has this activity going on. And uh you know, Mark Malcolm doesn't need to do that, it's part of his job certainly, but he goes out his way to bring the kids outside and do that. And uh what a treasure, not only Mark Malcolm, but that we have here in Maynard to have that type of activity going on, but. So I wanted to recognize that, and the library continues to do their thing, um you know, their their uh. Those types of activities are what keeps town lively. We hear too much negativity, it's time to be positive.
Thank you, anything else?
No.
Great, thank you, David. Chris? I'm sorry, you're you're good?
I have nothing to add, I'll cough my way through it.
All right, thank you, all right, well that will conclude board member reports, all under the motion to adjourn.
Who's to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, Justine?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. All right, thank you, everybody, and thank you, Greg.
Thank you, great night.
Thanks, Brad.
Thank you, Chris, good to see you.